Merrimack TV, are you ready? Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the January 11th, 2022 Merrimack School Board meeting. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Now, we are at, we are in the public meeting. The next item is public participation. I see a lot of familiar faces, but I'll just go through the rules. Essentially, remember, we are all in the same community. We are all neighbors, so please be respectful. Please also note that this is a business meeting and essentially, you know, direct your comments to us and also, you know, be concise. But I think, I think I see familiar faces, so you all know the rules pretty much. So we'll go ahead and get started. The one thing I will point out is just when you do come up, state your name and address for the record. And then also, we'll, we'll alternate. We'll do the microphone and we'll do the emails depending on how many we have. But I will go ahead and open up the floor to the microphone. So anyone who wishes to speak, please rise. Okay, sure. There's the...
My name is Rebecca Stats, Levin Bradford Drive. Can you hear me? Okay, just, just wanted to make sure. Okay. The masks, as we all know, we've, everybody has danced around this for so long now, I think, ad nauseam, and we've all been in the same place. It's obviously not making a difference, one way or another. You wear them, like all the kids have been doing with a few exceptions. We still, look where we are. It does not make a difference. Removing the freedom of the people who want to have their choice, for whatever reason, it's not that people are being mean. I've come to the grand conclusion in my life that on either side, for the most part, neither person's mean. Neither person wishes death on the other side. Although I have been told, I hope you curl up and die. I hope you lose your medical insurance. I hope your kids die. And just today, I saw, or I heard something on a radio station about someone who came into one of the supermarkets and a woman was berating some man for wearing a thing and throwing, throwing her medical degree or scientific degree in his face that I know better than you. Personally, I just had that happen a few days ago with someone of stature in our greater statewide community, who, in my trying to discuss with this person, basically said, well, I have a degree in this, 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 and this, and this, and I know better than you. And I think a lot of it comes down to that. Everybody thinks they know better than everybody else. Mr. Chevynell, please don't shake your head at me. I'm expressing my opinion, which is what this time is for.
My shaking of the head wasn't negativity.
Okay, thank you.
In regards to your remark, my shaking of my head was, I can't believe what I'm hearing and it bothers me personally.
Thank you.
Okay.
It very much bothered me too. Because I'd like to think that, you know, especially in a small town like this, we can be a little better than that. To be told by someone in, in, whose job is in Concord that my opinion means nothing to her. My medical reasons for not wanting to have my kids in masks or wanting to have them in masks didn't matter to her. It was what she wanted and what she's pushing for. And it's not only the masks that I'm afraid of. It's the vaccine. It's coming, we all know it, we already see it. And we already see in other states that there are horrible things coming. Everybody deserves respect. I deserve respect for my kids and me. I have my wheelchair tonight, sometimes I do, sometimes I don't, but... If I decide that I can't justify, with my medical condition, taking a chance on something, whose business is it but mine? And how dare someone come to me and say, it's your time for Russian roulette, let's spin it and let's see if you end up with Guillain-Barre or myocarditis or something else that I might already be predisposed to, or my kids. The same people on the other side, they're the same amount of risk to us as we are to them. And we're finding that now, coming out in the statistics. Even CNN realized that things are skewed, they're not as they appear. When are we gonna stop bickering? When are we gonna say, you're a person, what you choose matters? When are we gonna say, people get to choose for the kids that God gave them? Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon?
Thank you. The first email this evening is from Lisa Mongovan, 14 Lamson Drive. Good evening, school board members. I see tonight that DHHS has now adopted the new CDC quarantine guidance to ensure, to include schools as well. I hope that things will be addressed such as, these students must be masked, in parentheses, no opt-out for them, and that these students will be separated for lunch and snack when they unmask. I hope that this is addressed. I have one child attending preschool who still remains unvaccinated and vulnerable to the actions of others. Lisa Mongovan.
Okay, next up.
Mr. Olson, it was a very nice email exchange that I had with you today. Thank you for that and thank you for the respect. Piggybacking on what Rebecca said, and I also mentioned to Mr. Olson in my email, our freedoms are now taken away by the decisions that you've made for the no opt-out. I understand where you're coming from. And if you choose to put a mask on your face, that's your decision. If you choose to get vaccinated, that's your decision. Everything that we've been saying for the last two years is now starting to come out. CDC has said that less than 6% of people that have been vaccinated, the vaccines are effective. Oh, and let's see, Pfizer CEO came out and said, first one didn't work, second one didn't work, third one, well, maybe it might work. But guess who's not vaccinated? CEO of the company, nor is his entire family. So you choose to get it, you get it. You choose not to, you choose not to. You choose to wear a face mask, that's great. Anybody up here right now who's wearing a cloth face mask, guess what? The director of the CDC says they're not effective. So what, what are, is everybody trying to prove? And I don't mean that disrespectfully to anybody up there at all. It's your choice to wear a mask. Don't take away my choice, don't take away my freedom, don't take away my child's choice, and don't take away her freedom. I think we've had enough, we're two years into this. Everything is coming back to bite everybody in the butt that said this was gonna be gone by now, because guess what? Masks don't work, vaccines don't work. And oh, by the way, Pfizer's coming out with a new one in March. They said it's going to cure Omicron and it's going to take care of all the rest of the variants. Jeez, how do they know what the variants are? Nobody knows what the variants are, but apparently they're gonna be able to cure them. So my only thing is, when is everybody gonna wake up? All your personal freedoms are being taken away? When are you gonna take a stand and say enough is enough? Because I think a lot of us in this town have said enough is enough. And as for the numbers, why are we counting cases anymore? It's already been said, you should only be counting hospitalizations and deaths. So what do the numbers mean? It means you get to control the narrative and you get to keep the fear in the people. And at this point, like I said, I'm sick of it and so are a lot of other people. So maybe you should take our feelings into consideration as well instead of continuing the fear mongering with the rest of the town. Thank you.
Shannon?
The next email is from Brian Townsend, 5 Mary Meeting Drive. Dear Merrimack School Board members, I want to thank you for amending the mask policy requiring masking in schools where over 5% of occupants are positive for COVID-19. Currently, four of the six schools in Merrimack have surpassed that 5% threshold. I'm running to ask you to keep the current policy and add that same two-week masking mandate be imposed in individual classrooms where 5% of its occupants have tested positive. I also ask that you not adopt the new CDC quarantine guidelines. With COVID-19 cases at an all-time high, it is not time to ease restriction. Thank you for considering the health and safety of our students and staff and your efforts in keeping school in person. Respectfully, Brian Townsend.
Next up.
Sabrina Beebe, Wire Road, Merrimack. So, at this point in time, anybody who's wanted to vaccinate their child, five and older, has had the opportunity. At this point in time, it's time to drop the mask policy altogether. Merrimack doesn't need one. If you want a vaccine for your child to protect them, you get one. If you don't, you don't. It's over. Like COVID is over. I am so done with it, it's over. Drop the mask, because we're not backing down.
Thank you. Shannon?
The next is from Shayna DeBork of Belmont Drive. Good evening. I'm running today to ask you to reconsider the previously implemented policy in which the opt-out for masks is removed when the school meets a 5% threshold. This is a completely arbitrary number rooted in absolutely no science. I understand the decision was made in an attempt to try and compromise with those who want masks mandatory and those who want the option. Those of us who want the option have already compromised when you made the decision to mandate the wearing of masks in hallways. The spreadsheet for the tracking of schools' COVID data is extremely rudimentary and is not clear about from where the data is coming. As noted last week during the school board meeting, an error was made on the total occupants where the number increased by one every day, skewing the numbers. It is not clear on the MMS page how one, on one-third, there are 13 new positive students, but on 1/4, the number is, I'm sorry, 1/3, sorry, fractions. So on January 3rd, there are 13 new positive students, but on January 4th, the number of students positive is 12. Then on 1/4, there are three new positive students. On 1/5, there are 15 students positive. But with an additional three new positive students, I would think the number of students positive on 1/6 would be 18, but it's listed as 17. Then five more new positive students on 1/6, but only 20 positive students noted on the, on 1/7 on the spreadsheet. And she inserted the spreadsheet data. How many clusters are there relating to schools? If you are going to remove the opt-out for masks, please base it off something that at least makes some kind of sense. It's time we stop mass, making our children afraid that they are going to kill someone if they don't wear a mask. If someone is sick, they should stay home. If they are not sick, then there is no reason people should have to wait for a quarantine period or a negative test. If my child stays home from school because she has a stomach ache one day, then feels better the next day, it's ludicrous for you to ask me to hunt around for a COVID test that may or may not be accurate, as the home tests have been known to give not only false negatives, but false positives. If a child feels well, he or she should be in school. We also know full well that vaccines do not prevent the spread. If so, vaccinated children can go to school after exposure to a household contact, then there is absolutely no reason that a non-vaccinated child has to stay at home and quarantine. This guideline must change immediately. Please also note that links on the school district nurses page are also out of date, as many of them did not work. We have, we are now almost two years into COVID and the pandemic is over. This is an endemic disease now and it should be treated like any other flu or cold. Stop the mental abuse of our children, forcing them to shoulder the burden of adult anxieties and fears.
Thank you, Shannon. Next up, does anyone else want to address the board? All right, going once, any more emails?
No more.
Okay.
No more emails.
All right, we will move on. Before we do move on, I just wanted to mention that Board Member Rothaus is excused, as is student rep Caitlin Bedney. Caitlin may come late, but she is excused if she does not show. New business, Health and Safety Task Force update.
Yes, thank you. The Health and Safety Task Force met late last week after the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services released its guidance, new updated guidance with respect to isolation and quarantine timelines and recommended actions. The task force supports the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services revised guidelines. One of the issues now is the reduction of the quarantine and isolation timeframe from 10 days down to five days. That is going to require, in each school, the nurse in each respective building to contact parents individually, because children have been out at different times, our staff have been out at different times also. And so they're looking up the date of the illness with each child so that they can individually call each parent and talk to them about the date of return now, which will be shorter than the original 10 days. So that will take place. We're also, also recommending that a, a grace period be granted to those children who are fully vaccinated but may not have, by fully vaccinated, I will redefine that, who have had two doses of the vaccine but have not had the booster yet. Those appointments are becoming a little bit more challenging for families. And so we're recommending that sort of a grace period be extended until perhaps the end of sometime in February. We'll, we'll be a little bit more definitive than that. We're maybe looking at February 25th for children to get those boosters so that they can be considered what the, what the CDC and the DPHS now considers up-to-date vaccinations. That includes the booster. So, once again, the nurses will be dealing with the parents on that. But I want to report to you that the task force has unanimously voted to adopt, that the school, school system adopt the new D, New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services guidance with respect to isolation and quarantine. And it's my anticipation that I will post that to our parents and staff tomorrow morning. I wanted to inform you first, but we want to get the word out to the parents and to the staff as, as quickly as possible. Excuse me.
Are you all set? Are you up for some questions? Or do you have more? Are you ready for questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Questions? Lori Peters?
More of a comment. The, I, I understand why you're saying the grace period, but the CDC full vaccination definition is six months from your second shot to minimum for a booster is the recommendation, recommended schedule? So the grace period, I think, is a good communication, but it automatically falls within the definition of fully vaccinated.
Any other question? Jenna?
So my question is that, so the new guidelines say that with the exposure, the close, or if the child has COVID, they are home five days, but then they, they can go out and about if they are symptom-free and have a negative test, but they have to be fully masked for five days? Is that correct?
The recommendation is for being masked for five additional days.
Okay.
Unless they present symptoms. And then the recommendation is they go into isolation again.
Okay. So when, let's say a student who is in the opt-out population comes down with COVID, they stay home for the five days, then they come back, they should be fully masked for five days. How are we gonna track that? Because they're, they're, they're an opt-out by our, by our district, but per the CDC and the DHHS guidelines, they should be fully masked for five days.
That's where the nurses, we...
That's the part that you're talking about?
Yeah, and that's, that's always complicated.
Yeah.
Nurses are gonna have to be in contact with the individual classroom teachers and the administration. I can't say that it will be foolproof and run as smoothly as possible. I, in talking with other school systems also, that's the challenge in terms of, you know, trying to teach and, and not make them kind of the mask police in the, in the classroom, so.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions?
I have a comment. I think that that makes sense, that we transition to with the guidance. My concern, though, is that we don't get into the practice of creating a database of who's masked and who's not, that it strictly remains in the medical records, you know, and the nurses handle that on an ad hoc basis so that, you know, I, I'm not comfortable with, with tracking that.
Yes, we, we've had discussions off and on in our task force meetings. We will do nothing to identify a child and, and make a child feel uncomfortable or do anything that we think is inappropriate in terms of identifying a child either as a masker or not.
Okay, so what you're saying is that the nurses will have the individual private conversations with those families?
Yes.
They won't be creating any spreadsheets or anything? It'll just be in the documented?
That's, that's correct.
You know, whatever it is for that day?
Yeah, on an individual child basis.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I, and I just wanted to say, I'm not for tracking either, however... So I, I guess what I'm asking is, we're leaving it up to parents to, as to whether they're gonna adhere to that five days of masking or not?
That's correct. We will be communicating, the nurse will be communicating with the, with the individual families.
Okay, so if they say, well, no, we're not gonna adhere to that, then it's, okay, well, may the odds be ever in our favor?
Well, you know, we talked about that. And if a parent decides to keep a child home because they don't want the mask, that's essentially an unexcused absence. And so it's, you know, and I know that, you know, that's a rub to people, but I mean, at some point in time, we need to make a decision in terms of if a child is in school or not in school, what does that represent? Is it an excused absence or an unexcused absence?
Right, yeah, but, but they don't have the option to send them to school without a mask in that five-day period?
That's correct.
Okay, just making sure.
Okay. Next item, the warrant article, actually, we, it is the, we're switching the approval of the 2022-2023 school district budget. So at this point, you know, we open up the discussion regarding the budget and what, any changes or additions that we want to make. We have tonight on the docket. We also have time on Thursday if we don't finish all of our work or we need time for anything. But if we do happen to get through everything and approve the budget and approve the warrant articles, then we will call it a week. Otherwise, we'll be back here on Thursday. So does anyone have any additions or comments regarding the budget? Shannon?
I have a couple of comments, but first, I didn't think about this because I did ask if we could switch two and five on the original. So that way, we could talk about the warrant articles after we actually finalize the budget, because it seemed like the order of operations. But I'm also looking at the capital improvement plan discussion. And I believe that we may want to put that ahead of this, if you wouldn't mind, if the, if the board wouldn't mind, because it may change some numbers in that, that could affect the budget.
That's fine. I'm happy, I'm, I'm happy to do that, that's no problem. There's, they all kind of bleed into each other a little bit.
They do, but I think if we finalize the budget and then we have a number change in the, in, in something that we're gonna do this year, it could throw things off and we have to go back to the budget. So I just want to kind of nip it in the bud.
Okay. Capital improvement plan discussion, Matt Chevynell?
Thank you. You have the capital improvement plan in your packet and you also have the CIP and bonded debt schedule. You also have a letter regarding the Thornton's Ferry roof and the conditions thereof. And you also have at your place kind of an adjusted capital improvement plan that shows the turf field at the high school in 2526 with an initial lower bond payment and then spread out over a 10-year period. And then the central office master plan study for 20, not study, but actually to do some work at that point in time for 2324, which isn't applicable to, to this year's budget right now. At least it's not scheduled to be applicable to this budget right now. The one thing you do have is the MMS field phase two. After conversation with Mr. Keach, I'd like to pull that number off the CIP. We clearly have some more work to do before giving you a number that will ensure the usability and the, the length of time we want to use the field, not just the baseball field, but the entire soccer field. Steve gave us some information for the baseball field portion of it, but has not yet addressed the rest of it, which is the soccer field. And when we do this type of work, we want to address the entire thing. And we also want to look at the lower softball field. So there's clearly some more conversations that we need to have together so we fully understand one another and to come up with a more comprehensive plan. As Tom said before, the drainage we did at the base of the, the hill where the swale is, because you have to remember that, that field, it was a 30-foot cut into the side of a hill. And then the second one, the lower field, was another 30-foot cut too. So there's a lot of water coming off the hill, but we've taken care of that with the phase one approach. Phase two's a little more complicated because of the subsurface conditions in that area. So we'd like to pull back on that one and not have it there for your consideration in that amount. Let us come back either during the year or next year.
Shannon?
So on that note, just to have something there, can we, can I move that we take the MMS field repair and move it to 2324 and then you can get a better number later date?
Absolutely. That'd be most helpful, yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna move that we move the MMS field repair from fiscal year 2223 to fiscal year 2324.
Do I have a second? Okay, Lori Peters?
Jump it at the bit.
Any other discussion?
No. Let's just put, yeah, let's put the $300,000, just knowing that that was a placeholder, knowing that you're doing studies that will get us a more accurate number that we can actually strategize on in a few, starting next year.
Yes, thank you.
Okay?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, that's four zero zero, the motion passes.
I did have another question on something else, which is the O'Gara Drive, or O'Gara and Sidewalk. We have it in our, CIP is 552-625. And I wanted to get the flavor of the board. When this was first presented to us, I asked Matt, did that include the parking lot? Or as we like to call it, the retaining pond by the skate park?
The retention basin near the skate park. Sorry.
So, but with that, I asked what would be the cost to pave that as part of the project, because it would be fed into that whole complex? And the answer was $92.8.
$92.8, correct.
So with that, I would like to hear your consideration about paving that as we're doing O'Gara Drive and the sidewalks.
So what, so paving the, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the mosquito pond exactly. I think I am. Like, right in front of the, right in front of the tennis court?
Yeah, right, the, the location of the former tennis courts, which is now a field.
I have affectionately called it, because Paul loves, I know, know that I really, really like him and everything like that. I have called it Lake McCallie in front of him, so.
Just making sure we're clear.
Yeah.
So the actual paving project, minus what she's suggesting, the actual paving project, does that include paving the dirt lot that the...
Yes.
Okay, just making sure.
Yes.
Okay.
The dirt lot and putting in appropriate drainage so it doesn't turn into a skating rink in the wintertime, although that could be an advantage also.
Or, or the mud fest where my kids come home and say, I say, what happened to your shoes? And they say, well, it's the dirt lot. And I'm like, ugh, parking pass.
Yeah, we could sell tickets to a monster truck show there.
Pretty much. So with that, we want to entertain as a board, doing that, as we're doing the dirt lot, also doing the skate park lot, which we know is... which we know is subject to potholes and ponding. And that would add ninety-two, eight, which, I'm not gonna put my glasses on for this one, uh, which would be six, oh, wow, I'm not gonna do this well. Math teacher, is there a math teacher at the table? Oh, wait.
Ninety-two, eight, hundred, six forty-five, four twenty-five?
Yeah, so six forty-five, four twenty-five.
That sounds like a good number.
It does?
Yes.
So, um, I will move that we increase the O'Gara and sidewalk project on this to six forty-five, four twenty-five?
The second? The second by Jenna? Any discussion?
Um, yeah, because it's gonna lead into our next agenda item since you're so graceful to work with me, um, or gracious to work with me, I should say. And that is, I believe that we have in the budget right now, the five fifty-two, six twenty-five in the operating budget. Is that correct?
No, it's not in.
But I also don't see it on the warrant article, so we'll talk about that.
It's not, it was, um, yeah.
Okay.
We didn't create a warrant article for it because it was almost just discussion around it.
Okay.
But so if you wanted to fund that, it would have to be added into the the operating budget.
Okay.
Or a warrant article.
Or a warrant article.
You just tell me you're writing one up.
So we have more to talk about, so I'm glad we're doing this now. Okay. Answers my question.
Okay. Um. Yeah, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, that's four zero zero. Any other comments, uh, motions regarding the CIP? Shannon?
I move that we, uh, accept, adopt the CIP as amended.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, four zero zero. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
All right, now we will move into the approval of the school district budget. Or I should say the budget adjustments is probably the most accurate.
Absolutely. So.
Any budget adjustments? Shannon?
I have one. Um, I would like to add to repair account one hundred dash forty-six hundred dash sixty-two dash eighty-four fifty-one dash oh eight, the repair account for maintenance. One million, six hundred thousand, six hundred five thousand, was it? Sorry. Again, with my glasses. So, uh, one million, six hundred thousand, five hundred dollars for the sake of roofing at Thornton's Ferry being included in the operating budget.
Can you repeat that number again?
One million, six hundred thousand, five hundred dollars, sorry.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Um, discussion?
Um, maintenance came before us and we're actually putting our facilities at risk by not doing this work. It was put as a top priority because we do have compromise to that roof. And if we do not address it, we are looking at internal damage to our building. Uh, so I think we need to, uh, take the ownership that we have to create safe and secure buildings and put that in our operating budget.
And I would say I agree with you, um, one hundred percent. It does put us a little bit in a rock and a hard place.
It does.
Um, because if it's in a warrant article, no means no. So if the public votes it down, then we would not be able to even find any money to do that. And that would could jeopardize the safety of our schools, the safety of our students. Um, the, the, it would jeopardize perhaps the facility itself. If we had water leakage into other equipment and things like that. So I support putting that into the operating budget, um, because I I just don't feel like we have another choice that I'm comfortable with.
May I ask a question, being being new to New Hampshire? Are there other alternatives? Um, and the only reason I ask that is I'm concerned about that being added to the operating budget in terms of what impact that may have in terms of having to cut monies elsewhere in the operating budget. Um, so, Matt, do we have any other alternatives to that?
Um, that that's kind of a tough question. If it's, if it is a warrant article and it does fail, the the no me known statute holds holds up. You know, that was something that was put in place by the the legislature, uh, probably ten, ten years ago, I would say. Um, so the only other alternative is is basically in the the operating budget, but there's an issue there with it being so far over the default budget. So in either case, you have to do a good job of selling it, and you have to figure out, can you sell it as a warrant article? Standalone, put it in the voter's guide, um, do a lot of public relations with it, educate people, trust them to make the decision that we feel is in the best interest of the district. Or do you want to chance it in the operating budget? And the last time we had an operating budget that was over default, I think it was around fifty thousand dollars over default and the budget, operating budget failed. You remember that because we were talking about it in the in leadership and whatnot. So there's really not a great alternative. Um, warrant article, it's a style thing. Warrant article gives us a shot to highlight it and put it out there. Very, in the operating budget, it's a little more muddled, and people will look at two numbers, and one's gonna be two million dollars higher than the other. And it's a tough call.
Can you explain like an appeal process, right? So let's say it's a warrant article and it's critical that we take care of it. I know that we would have to jump through hoops and go to the state. And I think there's a process where we have to hold an emergency meeting or election or something along those lines. But let's say, um, we did put it on a warrant article, it fa- it failed, but then we're in a critical situation where it has to be taken care of. What are our options?
You would probably have to petition Superior Court to get a special meeting. And we have done a special meeting before, one time. And, uh, to do it for that that purpose, purpose only, um, that is a, that is an option. So you have to hold, go through deliberative session, go through budget committee, go through everything, ballot vote, et cetera. That that could be done. As far as appealing to the powers that be and conquered, um, we would have to work with our legal team to try and utilize perhaps any unexpendited surplus from our operating budget that we could at the end of the year in order to get it done. And we would have to get, um, approval from the commissioner, which I'm not even sure if he has the authority to do that, so it may have to go up a rung. And that means the governor. So it is a tough spot to be in.
Now, just, I think the answer is no on this one, but I'm just gonna, for the sake of just going through all of our options, we also don't have the option of going to the trustees for something like this. This wouldn't fall in line with trustee.
Yeah, this is a maintenance repair item. Trustees do basically enhancement activities, uh, like libraries and the gymnasium at J Muse, uh, the APR at J Muse and the bleachers, you know, that were enhancements, not repairs.
And just to add to that, the majority of our funding through the trustees is only applicable to the master.
Master cola, yeah.
And this is Thornton's.
This Thornton's.
Yeah, I I just, I guess my thought is that, uh, and, you know, for years I've been working on capital improvements and school budgets and, you know, um, categorizing those health and safety, uh, regulatory compliance, operating efficiencies, um, adjustments for enrollment changes and, um, improvements to academic and and ancillary service operations, those categories. And I'm I'm just wondering if we if we make a compelling case for the need based on health and safety, certainly, uh, criteria for the roof. You know, can we, can we have it, have and improve the chances of it passing in in a warrant article? I mean, it, you know, we have a lot, a lot of us have a lot of experiences with roofs, a lot of experience with roofs. And, uh, you know, once water intrusion begins, we all we all know that, uh, bad things happen. Uh, you're dealing with, uh, surface deterioration, you're dealing with potential mold. Uh, you're dealing with disruption to operations and health and safety matters. And so I guess my thought is, based on the years I've been working on capital improvements, if we present it a compelling case, which it is in fact, of the health and safety need, um, might it, might that warrant it being as a standalone, um, uh, warrant article?
Well, you 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 can draw a parallel between that and the ventil, the four million dollar lease purchase for the ventilation, uh, that passed. And it passed with a pretty darn good majority. And that's about air quality, and we we didn't say that it was COVID-related, but we did say it was to reduce CO2 levels in the in the buildings to give them, uh, a better learning environment because CO2 levels rise. People get headaches, they get groggy. This is a little more severe. If you have mold and we know that the insulation is wet and there's a corrugated steel deck on top of the insulation, that there is the possibility for mold to grow in that area. You know, you you kind of, I've kind of been trained over the years not to use the M-word, but I think in this case, I've got to say the M-word. The mo- possibility of of mold in that area is is more than fifty-fifty, I would say.
Well, I I agree that it really should be in the operational budget. I think people are just gonna look at that bottom line when it comes time to vote. And I think we have a better chance of being transparent and also explaining the critical need for this roof to be done if it's a separate warrant article. And I I mean, I see the pros and cons to both sides of doing this. I'm just trying to figure out which way would really get the voters behind it because it needs to be done. There's just no question. And I'm leaning that it's a warrant article because I can see it right there. We can make a compa- we can make a compelling case through our communication, through the voter's guide, just like we did with the HVAC lease.
Jenna?
I'll just say, I I agree, and I think that, you know, I think the voters, when it comes to schools, fire and police, are pretty responsive about, oh, okay, you need that? Okay, yes. And I can't imagine they vote against a roof, especially when it comes down to the warrant articles, our vote is also put on there. We're voting unanimously that the roof needs to happen. I mean, I guess we could all be gambling wrong, but the the taxpayers are generally pretty good about making sure we have those things taken care of. I totally get it, and I I see the risk, and it makes me uneasy. But I think, I think that, I think that Lori might be right.
I agree with her too. I think it's, it's, I I do think there's an element of transparency when it's standalone and it's there. I feel a little better knowing that there's recourse, you know, that we can go and we can petition. That makes me feel better to know that, you know, if it's a dire need, you know, we've never had to go through that process, at least since I've been following school board meetings for a long time now. You know, we've never had to go to the state, but the fact that there is a process that we can, um, makes me feel a little more comfortable with that approach. And initially, that's not how I felt I was gonna feel tonight, um, because I think Shannon's right. You know, when you really need something, you know, you've got to put it in the operating budget. And, you know, there's a responsibility to do that. But I think, um, I do think there's a chance of it failing in either place, and I feel like there's a greater chance of it failing in the operating budget and then a warrant article. So I would support it being a warrant article for those reasons. Shannon?
I think we also have to consider, you know, what are things that, you know, because facilities to me are not up for discussion in having them, this this roof, everything we've been told is not up for discussion. So those are things that we were elected to be responsible for, and if it's, if we've put them in harm's way, we're not taking care of our responsibilities. Are there things in our operating budget that we want to consider reconsidering or putting in a warrant article? Initiatives, anything else, things that we, and I, you know, we always use the term kick the can, but when it comes down to it, I don't think that we can kick the can on this roof. Um, and I don't know that the recourse is crystal clear, um, honestly. And if it has to go to the governor to allow us to hold a meeting, to ask for the money, which a meeting is an election. So that means there's going to be a deliberative session. There's going to be, um, a day of voting. There is going to be, um, you know, obviously the tabulation. So there's a whole process above and beyond once they allow you to have it. So with that, I think that that's a lot of risk to take for something that we have been told we've, we're already at risk for, and it's not really o- optional. Um, but are, is there one point six million in our budget that, not that I'm saying that we want to move it, but is there anything in our budget that could be adjusted? Um, and and that's, that's what I think we need to consider.
I just, I don't, I, no.
I don't believe to that magnitude, no.
But the thing is.
Not to that magnitude, no.
But maybe one. You know, we've always gone through the process of what would a million dollars in cuts look like? What would, you know, five hundred thousand in cuts look like? What would a million five look like? Um, and by the way, the year that we did have that default budget be our budget, that was two thousand sixteen, is my first night as chair. So I remember it like it was yesterday. It was, it was six years ago. But the thing is, you know, we're asking our taxpayers to take the risk for us, and I don't think that's fair to them either. Um, because again, this is our responsibility. Uh, so I am gonna stay with my vote. Um, again, I don't feel there's a a true clear path. I mean, there's options, there's, there's, we're gonna be bringing in legal teams. We paying lawyers instead of paying roofers, uh, to try to get the same outcome. So for that reason, I'm gonna stick with my original motion.
Can I, can I ask a question? So flip side, you know, I honest to goodness, I hear it both ways. Like, if she talks, I'm like, oh, yeah, and she's, and I'm like, oh, yeah. But so what happens if the if the budget fails? So so let's say, let's say we put it in the budget. I'm inexperienced enough to to ask this question, like, the budget fails and then we we, it immediately goes to default and that's what we function off of? And therefore, the roof doesn't get done anyway, right?
When, if the budget fails, you can, you can, or the governing body, which is you guys, may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA blah blah to take up a revised operating budget. So if your budget fails, you have the option of taking up a revised operating budget. Now, usually that means that the budget that you put out there, you're going to come in a little bit lower to make it more palatable for the voters, right? Because the higher number wasn't palatable. But you have the option of holding another budget hearing meeting, which goes through the same kind of process.
But we don't have to have an election.
You have to have another election.
So either way.
If you don't accept the default budget, then you can have another election. So either way, you've got to go through another election. One of them is, there's no good answer. I mean, years ago, we we had one point two million dollars in the operating budget for the middle school roof. That was in the operating budget, and we had a history of doing that. And then things changed where the board wanted more transparency, so we started putting roofs and large capital items in the, in, as warrant articles, right? And there was nothing wrong with that. But once you take, once you stop the repetitive nature of doing roofs like we did asbestos and keep it in the operating budget year after year, you can't carry it over into the default budget for the following year for another roof project. Because it's items likely to reoccur in preceding budgets. That's part of the language of the default budget. So when it's in the operating budget, and it has been for a number of years, you could have put this in there and it would have been in the default budget also. But we don't have that. In that capital account that Shannon mentioned, the sixty-two account, there's zero in there right now. No one said this was easy, and this is kind of like, you know.
Shannon?
So just from a logistical standpoint, the governing body can call a special meeting more easily than petitioning the government or, and the RSA does have fifty people petitioning for a special meeting to readdress. If we put it in the operational budget and the operational budget fails, although I think we should start looking for some ways to save on the current operational budget, then we can more easily readdress just that issue with the voters at a second go-around than if we put it as a warrant article and it fails.
Yes, because the language is currently in there, that you can take up a revised. Yes, because the language is currently in there that you can take up a revised operating budget if the budget fails. And you don't want to accept what your default budget is.
Well, the roof's not in that default budget, so that's the problem. And we need the roof, period.
Where do you think it's going to get the most press? Is it going to get the most press and, and, and PR in a standalone warrant article that's out there that we can talk about in the voter's guide? Or is it going to get press and the, the bowels of the operating budget buried in everything else and people see an extra $2 million and they vote for the lesser figure? Regardless of the amount of PR you can put towards the operating budget and why it's higher than the default budget for X, from X amount of dollars and what it really means, how, how are you going to highlight that in the face of the voter? You know, we're, having done this for 30 years, when you're too close to something, you, you know everything that's there. And what I have to do is kind of take myself out of my role and put myself in the role of an average taxpayer that's somewhat kind of tuned in. Not everybody is, you know, and look at things and they go, oh my gosh, a, a roof. Okay. That seems reasonable. Oh, I read the voter's guide. That seems re- it was voted unanimously by the board. It was voted probably unanimously by the budget committee. This looks like a good idea. I think I can buy that. Or is it easier to do it in the operating budget when it's not called out? It's just tough.
Well, let me ask you this question. So, and I know the answer, but I'm going to ask you.
What, what answer do you want me to give you?
Yeah, out of, out of the last, out of the last 10 years, how many times did our budget go above the default and what percentage of the times did it fail with the taxpayers?
It was one time.
And 100%?
Yeah. Because we've always been under the guidance to come in a little bit under default. That's true, you know? That's the way it always wound up.
I'm going to stick with wanting to keep it in the warrant article.
I think I do too.
Sorry. I know there's other warrant articles we're going to talk about, but I just think this has got to be, it's got to be in a warrant. That's where I'm gonna stay.
Did you have a motion on the table that we need to vote to?
Yeah.
Yes, we're in discussion.
Okay, yeah, of course. Really, really long day for me. Really long day for me. I was eight hour meeting all day. So, um, really feeling tired tonight. But, um, so let's go ahead and take the vote on that. All those in favor of Shannon's?
My motion is to add 1,600,500 to the budget for the sake of the Thorntons Ferry roof.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Three, the motion fails. One, three, zero. Any other, um, budget adjustments? Shannon, I guess we'll just stay with you right now.
I, I really just have a question that before we do anything more, we need to know, it's not a warrant article, it's not in the budget and it's the, the thing we just voted on increasing in our CIP for this year, which is the O'Garrett Drive and Sidewalk. So it's, it's no, it's, we've approved it as an, as for this year, but we haven't put it anywhere to actually do it. So I don't think it's ever happened before or it wasn't in one place or the other, but it's on our CIP.
Correct.
So, so either we have to find another warrant article or we need to add 645,425 to the budget, or we amend our earlier vote and we move it to another year. Those are our three options.
I'm going to say that I'm in favor of moving it to another year because I think we're asking a lot of the taxpayers in a very, you know, tough time.
Okay.
And we're looking at warrant articles and our budget is, um, still over default. So I just think that it's, you know, it's not in, it would be, it needs to be done, but I think that it can wait a year. So I think, um, do you want to make a motion to amend the earlier CIP, Shannon?
Yes, so I will move that we move 645,425 in our capital improvement plan from year 22, 23. And I'm going to suggest we move it to, um, I just want to make sure I have it right. Uh, 24, um, yeah, to 24, 25 because the reason for that is we'll be doing the student SAU next year, nothing than that, the following year, which is the year I'm recommending. And the year after that would be the, the turf field, which is 25, 26. So I think 24, 25 is the right year.
Do I have a second? Lori Peters. Anyone else want to speak to it?
Are you, are you sure it's 24, 25 or 23, 24? Cause right now we're.
23, 24, you're putting in, unless you want to add it to the operating budget, uh, cause you're only putting the, the interest on the first year. So you do have that option.
Here's my concern with putting it off too far.
Me too.
It's the sidewalk.
I know.
If your kid doesn't get a parking pass, speaking as a parent of a kid who didn't get a parking pass till their senior year, they're walking in the middle of the road from the dirt parking lot up the, you know, it's a safety issue. It's not even like the bumpy, I don't even care. Don't pave the, it's, it's the, it's the sidewalk doesn't go down all the way.
Nope.
There's a little bit of a sidewalk there, but not.
Yep. The, the other thing I was thinking about was that bond for the middle school would be over. So if you want to move it to 23, 24, your bonded debt with capital improvements goes up to, uh, 2 million, say, eight, six, eight, 57, uh, it's a 2,858 rounding it up. I'm not being a math teacher. Uh, so, so that's what I was looking at. Again, that spike and dip of the tax rate is always what I'm looking at. Um, so I don't look at one without the other. So with that, you would have that being it and then we'll drop the next year to 1,949. So you go like 3.2 million this year, you would go 2.8 million the next year and then you dropped just under 2 million the year after.
Did you want to amend your motion?
So yes, I'll amend my motion to 23, 24.
And Lori, will you second that?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, 400. Passes.
So then I, I will remove that we, um, move the entire CIP as amended again.
All right. Do I have a second? Made by Lori Peters. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, 400. Okay. Okay, back to, um, budget adjustments.
So this is not a significant, um, budget number. It is, it's more addressing a concern. I'm concerned with the way we are, uh, in the budget funding the co-curriculars at the three elementary schools, which are 5,000 and 2,000, um, respectively, that that is going to be creating an inequity, especially for those students who are not able to stay. I also would like to hear a good case for those clubs. Do we have volunteers? Do we have, um, opportunities for parents who are interested in those things, who would like to volunteer for those programs? I know with COVID, we haven't been able to do that. But I'm concerned that with creating that kind of inequity, we're, we're creating a two-tier co-curricular system for kids who, and I believe it was Shannon who brought it up, who have a stay-at-home parent or guardian who can, um, be there to pick them up and be involved versus those who go to the Y or other after-school programs and don't have transportation. So it's not that I'm opposed to the idea. I just feel like we need some more information and research on that, especially what parents would be interested in volunteering for the gardening club or the rocket club or things like that for those elementaries before we use taxpayer funds to do that.
Are you saying that you'd like to remove that from the budget for this year?
I'd like to discuss removing it from the budget.
So here's.
Go ahead, Jenna.
So here's my thought. So I, before I ended up working full-time, one of the things I did was reach out to Thorntons Ferry, interested in doing a STEM club after school, after school, even in the evenings, whenever, didn't matter to me for, uh, the elementary age. In fact, opening it up. But as a parent, one of my questions was, is, are there funds in the budget to provide some supplies? I wasn't thinking I was going to get $5,000, but did everything, I, if I did, if I stepped up to do this, would every single thing I needed need to come out of my pocket or was there a budget for it? So my fear in taking it out means that there's no option even for parents to do it. But I also don't think it necessarily means that they have to happen right after school either. You know, a, a parent could step up and say, I'd love to do a STEM club, Wednesdays at 6:00 PM. It could be just for Thorntons Ferry students or for, you know, multiple elementaries or whatever. Um, but if the funds are there, then the school might be able to say, okay, yeah, we can, you know, we've set aside X amount of dollars per club that might be started, or if you give us a list, we can approve it, or however that would work. But if there's nothing there, then nothing can happen. But if there's at least something there, then there might be the chance of something happening. I definitely do agree with the whole, you know, they can't all happen right after school because then we've got an issue. But I, I, I hesitate to take it completely out because then there's no option of anything happening. And I'd hate to, for that year, a year to go by without that there.
And I think that's why it's good that it's written the way it was because it's 2,000 is the supplies. 5,000 is stipends to teachers. And I'm, I'm saying, I'm not sure this is the year, especially with the other warrant articles we have on the budget, just the optics of that, along with everything else everyone is feeling right now. I, I think this is an opportunity to reopen our doors to volunteers. And, and I, I would not be opposed to leaving the supply budget line in there.
Kim?
Yes, thank you for those, those questions, the questions and for raising this. Um, there's a lot of validity to having co-curricular activities and it's something that Meramec is, has fell behind in providing for students, those enrichment opportunities, remedial opportunities, adventure opportunities. Um, and some of those have occurred in the past through stipends coming out of the service learning project monies. And I'll give you an example is that at Reed's Ferry School, um, we ran a snowshoe club that was really successful. There was 67, it was so, so many kids. Um, the parents came in to volunteer because for every seven kids, we needed an adult. So in order for those, all those kids to participate, we would have parents volunteer as well as have paying paraeducators to come and, um, work and be with students who required that paraeducator support. So by removing this co-curricular line, it's not going to eliminate the opportunities. They could just be funded differently. We could look at grants and we could look at, um, uh, service learning projects and look at volunteers. So I'm very, very tethered and very committed to providing co-curricular activities and to also try to eliminate any divide that might occur for students who are maybe not able to attend. We have had in the past students who have attended, for example, the snowshoe club and then gone right into the after-school program and just arrived late to the after-school program. So if it was an onsite daycare, it really works out quite well. So I, I would suggest that we put it to study because we can look at other models. And by putting it to study and putting it off a year, we can, we can do a little bit more research. We can look at other funding sources and we can investigate how to, um, look at that divide that, uh, that Chairperson Chop Barnes brought up.
And I love that idea because I think we can have the cooperation of the board. I'd be willing to, you know, help with that volunteer for that. But also that's an opportunity to survey our parents that have had to sit on the sidelines for COVID as part of that study process.
Sure. And, you know, I'm happy to work with you on that. Um, I just want to ask though, does this also pertain to the master, the middle school, um, that has a co-curricular? And it probably not because of blessing?
I did think about that, but my, my, I have lesser concern there because you have a lot of students who are not in after-school programs there. And you have the late bus and things like that. So it was more of my concern at the elementary level.
Shannon?
No, I, I would have to say that when it comes down to it, you know, even with, you know, some of the high school programs, there needs to be staff engagement. You know, I look at Chop Shop and there is absolutely staff, uh, support with that, but there's a lot of parent support, volunteers. So there are examples of that throughout. Uh, the thing I'm not versed on right now is what you, you know, I know there's fingerprinting involved with parents and all that stuff, the backgrounds you have to go through. So, so with that, you know, bring volunteers back in, there's still a process and I believe that things are very backed up and conquered. Are they getting better?
They're getting better.
They're getting better. Good. Okay. Cause I, I heard there was a problem for a while. Um, so that's good news. But with all that, I think, you know, the reasoning for bringing the programs to the table was to get them back, folded back into their community and get connected again. And I don't think that's changed. So I would be hesitant. I hear exactly what you're saying. I was saying the same things. I do want to see some dynamics where, again, if they're in after-school programs outside of, you know, the national adult learning, which is in our building, that they're not, you know, excluded from the opportunities. So that was really what I wanted to vet because we didn't have a lot of data in our budget book about what your ideas were, uh, for the program. So we were trying to use the numbers to back into the story, which I don't think, you know, was, was, you know, that's why you got the, the grilling you got on budget nights. Cause I really didn't know exactly where this was going. Uh, that said, I think there's still is a lot we need to do. Teachers have to be involved for this to work. And when it comes to it, um, these kids need that sense of community now. I would hate to put that off. Um, you know, but then again, if we can get processes where you don't spend all of it, that money does go back to the, can go back to the taxpayer. So, so I would, I would be more inclined to not, uh, cut it from the budget. And if we don't spend it because the programs, we do get offsetting with volunteers, the, the workload, then we can work other ways.
And I would, I would agree with you and keep it in the budget if we can take a parallel path. Where for next budget season, we are looking, we are looking for grants and other opportunities and, um, so that maybe we can remove it from the budget, but we have wicked high, you know, community involvement and, and lots of other outside resources.
I mean, I was going to say, you know, I think we should keep it and look at it as a pilot. Um, and if we don't spend it and we find ways, you know, and, you know, to increase the, and then be able to do a look back. I mean, I won't be on the board at that time, but the board at that time will be able to look back and say, and of course, obviously, you know, everyone involved in the programs will be able to look back and make those recommendations. But I do think that, you know, on the heels of COVID right now, um, I think it's important that we, you know, and it's really not a, a lot of money. And I think to put it, it's many remedial opportunities, as many growth opportunities out there. And I do agree, um, with what, uh, Kim Yarlet said, and, and I think that our district is behind, you know, for those type of programs, you know, for kids at those ages. So, you know, for those reasons, I prefer to keep it in. And I think there's a fair compromise to say, you know, we want to be able to look and see what is done, get that feedback from parents, um, see if we can find ways to cut those costs so we can return them to the taxpayer if they're not used. And I feel like that's a fair compromise as well. Okay. Okay. Any other, um, suggestions regarding budget adjustments or any other discussion items regarding the operating budget?
I just want to clarify one thing. The night that we heard Heather Barker speak, and this was not just clarification herself. I had a massive migraine that night. Um, I think it's important, we're communicating on the budget that we are extending our summer again. That is so critical with, even though we've done a great job helping students move forward from where they were to where they are now, we've got to keep that going. And I'm just speaking from personal experience, from my own students, that we were even face to face last year, but still that, that critical emotional component affected grades and learning and processing and being able to even process experiences. And so that is a huge chunk of our budget. And I think we need to be communicating clearly that that is for that extended summer that is so critical. And we had so many more opportunities for students last summer, especially opening up math opportunities and things like that, that I think were just really outstanding. And so I, I don't want to remove anything. I don't want to add anything. I just think we need to make that clear that it's not, it's not the standard summer, which affects our budget.
May I just say thank you for that position because extended year programming has taken on an entirely new perspective for, for a greater number of students for a greater number of reasons.
That's an excellent point. That's an excellent point. Any other budget adjustments or items of discussion? No?
So are you looking for a motion?
Yeah, I am.
I know you are. So I'm looking for the number, so hold on one second.
I'm going to let Shannon do it, because it's her last time.
It's my last one. I found the number, thank you. I just now need to put on my glasses so I can read it. I love my, I loved my 40s and...
Yeah, I'm with you.
Yeah, totally got it. So I move that we accept the proposed budget of $83 million, $439,156.21 for the school year '22-'23.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Paid by Lori Peters. Does anyone else want to speak more about it? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, that carries 400.
Thank you very much for your support.
You're welcome, and thank you, all of you, and so many more in the district that worked so hard to get this pulled together this fall amidst so many other competing challenges. So thank you.
Yeah, a couple of things, if I may. I love the format this year, I love the questions in advance, I love the opportunity for us to give you answers in writing and really thoughtful responses. And anything that you asked off the cuff, that's always your prerogative, and that's always, you know, we're always here to answer those, and we can answer those. But I really appreciated the process this year, and the way we just went about it, and the way everybody carried themselves throughout, I think it was absolutely wonderful. And I'm looking forward to going in front of the Budget Committee with a good, solid budget for the taxpayers of Merrimack. So thank you.
And I think, you know, there also might be some opportunities to look at that process in the future.
Yeah.
Like, you know, maybe running parallel with the Budget Committee and the School Board at the same time, where you have a discussion around the same things at the same time. Might extend, right now, there's kind of such a rush, because it's so sequential, the way we go from School Board to Budget Committee. But it might be worth looking at, you know, it's always been done this way, but maybe it's the best way to do it. Maybe there's, you know, another way that might prove to be fruitful, but, you know, that's to be seen. All right, on to the next, which is the warrant articles, warrant article discussion. Matt?
Okay, so we have a draft of the warrant. The first one really is Article II. Shall the district, shall the Merrimack School Board be authorized to accept on behalf of the district without further action by the voters gifts, legacies, and devices of personal or real property which may become available to the district during the fiscal year? It's a majority vote required. The Budget Committee does not need to vote on this, it's only the School Board. This is something we've been doing for, I don't know, really long time before I got here. And you can accept cash donations, we do that at the board meeting. If it's over 5,000, we do it at a public hearing. So somebody wants to give us a million dollars' worth of cash, we can do that right here at this table. But with land and real property, you have to be authorized to do that. And if you don't pass this warrant article, you have to have a special meeting to accept those, go through the warrant article process, go through the whole thing. And the thing is, you know, it's like the Ronka property, W-R-O-N-K-A. 13 acres going down the hill towards Buckley's. You know, that was years, I think that was probably my first year, and that was gifted to us. And we were able to accept that, and the board did, after discussion. And they accepted it formally, talking about, are there any downsides to this, anything like that? And so this is why we have to have this every single year. It allows us the flexibility to do that. So that's fairly boilerplate.
I just have, I just have a, like, totally procedural question, because Lori's not here. How will the vote read? It won't read as a unanimous vote, it'll read as a four...
Four, yeah.
Unanimous, just not complete, that's all.
Oh, I see what you're saying, 401?
No, 400.
00.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay, perfect, yeah, okay.
Okay, want me to, do you want to handle these one at a time?
Yeah, let's do one at a time.
Okay.
Do I have a motion on this one, or?
I motion, make a motion that we accept the warrant article as printed.
Do I have a second? Okay. Discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, that's 400.
Yeah.
The next one we have is Article III. It is the agreement between the Merrimack School Board and the Merrimack Teachers Association, which calls for the following net increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing levels over the amount paid in the prior fiscal year. And further to raise that amount for the current fiscal year, such sum representing the additional costs attributed to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would have been paid at the current staffing levels. So this represents the teacher's contract that the School Board was in negotiation with over the past few months. It's representative of a one-year contract, a 3.75% increase, and with a longevity benefit associated with it. And it's completely, this is a loaded, it's a gross number. It includes New Hampshire Retirement, FICA, everything like that, so it's an all-in figure.
And it's actually not long, it's off-grid, I think is the way we're calling it. So basically, we only have so many steps, and these are the ones beyond the steps. So, so it's just basically it's off-grid.
Right.
A stipend, or that's a flat rate, I should say.
Yeah.
So just one thing to say on this, it is a one-year agreement, and I just wanted to give a little texture to it. Normally, you're used to seeing three-year agreements. And we negotiated a one-year agreement, so we could do, it became abundantly apparent that our teacher salaries are off-market. So really, the 3.75% is what we're looking to make sure is stabilized year over year. We're going to get to another article in a minute, but I want to kind of lay the groundwork of that. But this gives a year for us to really do an analysis. I will say, I just read in the news that we have, just south of us, Nashua, and we are going to be losing teachers to all of these places, that just, they have not gotten their entire contract done, but they did agree to an $11 million increase to also stabilize their salaries, because they're off-market. So with that, you know, we are in a competitive marketplace. You know, I've served in Concord at the NHSBA for a number of years. And the one thing, when you think of the statewide, that they don't really think about, is how vulnerable this area of the state is, the southern tier of the state. Because you can drive 13 miles from where we sit today, and you're making Massachusetts income and benefits. So we're losing teachers there as much as we're losing it amongst ourselves. And we are losing amongst ourselves. And so with that, we need to take a year, take a beat, make some adjustments that we know are flagrantly deficient across the grid. But this will basically take care of the salary and benefits that would be a normal contract year. But again, we're doing it at a slightly more aggressive rate, knowing that we have been consistently falling behind our neighboring towns around us. So, yeah, I'd like to move it, if you're in mind. So I move that we accept Article III as presented.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, that's 400. All right, next?
Yeah, the next article is Article IV. It's a trailer to Article III, and this is standard practice and has been for a dozen, 20 years now. What it does is, shall the district, if Article III is defeated, authorize the School Board to call one special meeting at its option to address Article III cost items only? And this isn't a money-warrant article, it's an article to hold a special meeting. This needs to be voted upon by the School Board. And if you don't have this article, you would have to petition Superior Court to get a special meeting. And this gives you another chance to, let's say, renegotiate the contract, cost items only, just the money, and come in with a different article, and then go through the voting process once again. So if the first time it doesn't pass, you get another chance to do a revised contract. So we will go through the negotiation process again. So this is fairly, fairly standard.
Yeah, every year. Do I have a motion on this one? All right, second by Jenna. All those in favor signify by saying aye, that's 400. Next?
Next one is Article V, and this is another agreement between the board and the Merrimack Teachers Association. This is basically to aid us in competing with neighboring districts and those across the state line. We have, Merrimack has historically been beneath surrounding towns. Your Bedford, Amherst, Hollis, Brookline, you know, any town in Massachusetts, Chemsford, Westford, Tinsborough, whatever, I mean, they're all there. And so this is an attempt to tack on another article that would create, and I'll just read it. The following net changes in salaries and benefits at the current staffing level over the amount paid for the prior fiscal year for a market adjustment added to the base salary beginning in '22-'23 to position the Merrimack Teachers Association at competitive rates in regards to surrounding districts in the amount of up to $950,000. Now that includes all the benefits in the Hampshire Retirement and everything like that. I think the adjustment to salaries would be in the $750,000 range. And this would bring them up a couple of points, but that would be spread across the salary chart, which will work with the MTA on developing, in order to put us in a more competitive fashion with surrounding districts, so we can keep the good people we have, and we can cultivate the people that we need, because there's a lot of positions right now that we just can't fill. And a lot of that is due to, you know, salary. And so this is an opportunity to make up for that, and it gives the voters the choice. Instead of one big warrant article that has, you know, like a 6% increase in there, or something like that, you know, you can vote for the first one, it's 3.75%, and then you could, if you wanted to, we're giving you the option to allow us to do a market correction to bring our teachers up to where they should be in this competitive teaching environment. So I thought that was fairly unique. That wasn't my idea, that was somebody else's idea that's sitting on the board, I'll just point in a direction. And I think it's really kind of creative. There is a note here, I have run this past legal and DRA and everything like that, that this article represents a one-time salary adjustment to the scale, but it's going to be part of the base. And so it's going to roll forward. It's not cumulative, this isn't going to happen every single year. It's a one-time adjustment.
Shannon?
There's just a couple of things to point out. And I just want to make sure, kind of to put like a little razor edge on what you were saying earlier.
Please.
The market analysis we did was surrounding towns in New Hampshire. So I know you mentioned Westford and Tinsborough, they were not part of this analysis.
No, they weren't.
So it was Bedford, London Dairy, Hudson. We looked at, you know, really those comps. Dairy was in there, of course. Anyone where we would lose a teacher or gain a teacher, because it's commutable. We did not look at the far north, because it's not, it's not where our marketplace is, and we did not cross the border. So this is really, and when we looked at the analysis of the salaries, we ranged about $40,000 to $6,000 less per year on a number of those. I'd say 80% of that grid was $40,000 to $6,000 less, and there's a couple that are at or a little higher. But I'm saying that very few of those cells in the salary tables were above. Very few were at, most, like I would say, the vast majority, probably about 80% of those cells were below. And that $40,000 to $6,000 was the average that we were below, somewhere maybe as low as two. But that's when you're getting into some of the longer. But in the recruiting corner of that, we were really, we're going to be in a losing battle. The reason this article is separate is because we're asking to use surplus. So again, we're not looking to take another taxation, put it in the bank, and at the end of the year, send the money back that we don't use. We're looking to use this current year's fiscal surplus, which based on some of the grants that we've gotten from the federal government and other resources, should be higher than other years. So we know that it's something, again, I talk ad nauseam about dips and spikes. This is a time where you're not going to feel it the way you would feel it in a year that we've had, say, where we had 20% increase on health insurance. This is not that year that we're experiencing those kind of challenges. So again, we could give a ton of money back to you, just turn around next year to ask for a ton of money back. We want to make, try to levelize and stabilize that tax rate for you by taking this adjustment now and re-establishing that. But again, we're in dire straits when it comes to our competitive position in the marketplace to attract and retain the teachers we want in our classrooms. And again, using a surplus to do this will be the least impactful to our taxpayers' tax bill, and that's what we were looking to do. That said, I was talking with Matt, and I see us having no less than a $4 or $5 million surplus. So I would like to adjust that Article V percentage to some not to exceed 25% of the unencumbered surplus funds. Because again, it's that bucket of money. Right now, it's, the draft had it at a high number of 75%. It's going to come nowhere near that. And so I don't want you to think you're not getting any surplus funds given back. The likelihood of it being 25%, it probably won't even be 25% based on some of the money that we're getting back for other reasons. So would you be comfortable with that number, 25%, Matt, based on projected surplus?
Yes, absolutely. I've been playing around with the percentage in my head, and I tried to think of something that logically would make sense, and I think that the 25% number is a good number to land at. So you're giving, 75% of the surplus would go back to reduce taxes, not 25%, up to 25%, or 950, whichever is lower.
Whichever is lower.
And that's a motion, Shannon?
Would go back to fund this warrant article.
Okay, so I wanted to just make sure I make a safe motion before I made the motion.
No, it was a safe motion, yes.
So I move Article V, adjusting the sum not to exceed to 25%.
And actually, if you don't mind, I'm going to go ahead and second it. Just, I know Board Member Rothhouse would love to second it if she were here, so...
Yeah, Lori was second chair on this negotiating, so unfortunately, she's not here tonight.
I just wanted to take that moment and second it and acknowledge her contribution, and how thankful I am as a board member that you and Lori partnered so well and worked so collaboratively with our teachers' union. And I know many of our teachers are watching, as well as union leadership. So I wanted to express that thanks there, to come up with just a one-year temporary situation so that things, data can be gathered. And so again, I just wanted to acknowledge my appreciation for Board Member Rothhouse, as well as you and others, and so that's why I wanted to second it. Any other discussions on this? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, that's 400.
Article VI, it's a special warrant article, just in case it carries over into another year. It's not going to, we're going to get it done if it passes in one year, but, you know, you never certain. So, shall the district raise and appropriate the sum of $1,600,500 for the purpose of roof replacement at Thornton's Ferry Elementary School? This has to be voted on by the School Board and by the Budget Committee. And we've talked about that.
Any other discussion on this one? All right, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I was going to say, I move Article VI as printed.
Okay, do I have a second? Board Member Peters, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, 400.
Now, the next one is one I just kind of took a little poetic license, and I just kind of put in there. I know this was a petition warrant article a few years ago by a member of the Budget Committee, Lee French. Nice individual, loves his mustache, good guy. So I figured I'd throw that in there, just to see if you would entertain. So I figured I'd throw that in there just to see if you would entertain it. "Shall the Merrimack School District vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $200,000 for the primary purpose," I could get rid of primary if you wanted to, "the purpose of, purpose to raise the building known as the former Brentwood School, AKA the Red Building, and return the site back to a usable condition with appropriate fill compaction and spread gravel to allow for future use for school purposes." I remember how Lori Rothaus made a statement that the, the town has offered some of its services to, to help with this endeavor. I had a conversation with Paul McCally as she suggested that I do, and what the town can do is offer its DPW trucks. We would then have to take the building down, we'd have to hire somebody to take the building down. Bill and I are getting out there with our chainsaw. So Kim will, she's in a, she's the outdoorsy type, so you know, you got to watch out for that. So, so we would, we would have to have, you know, a company come in, take the building down, put it in an appropriate, you know, sections, load it into the town trucks, and then the town would bring it to the landfill and they would charge us $95 a town, a ton. So I don't know how many tons that 10,000 square foot building weighs, but, so that's something we consider in working with them, you know, if we chose to. But Paul can't take cement, concrete, or anything like that, so that would leave the foundation. Personally, I would like to dig up the foundation, get rid of all the old concrete, rebar, everything, and bring it back to a pristine site with proper compaction and everything like that. And so the 200K would, would, would do it if you wanted to go in that direction, or we could leave it for police and fire training for another year or two.
So I saw Lori Peters and then Shannon.
So if I recall correctly, because I spoke at the deliberative session when this was the warrant article, the board was against this because it was part of the master plan, and we discussed in economies of scale, and that if we raised the building then or now, we spend the money, but we don't know where in the master plan what will be on that site, we could end up having to dig up what we put down with the, you know, to make this accessible in the meantime. And so I'm, I'm really not in favor of this warrant article this year because we keep talking, we keep having that master plan be at the forefront of it. And I get it, I know what the utilities are, I remember the budget committee lowering the budget last year for the utilities, and this year we can't do that because utilities have skyrocketed, but I, I don't think this is a year to have this warrant article.
Yeah.
Shannon?
Um, I think I was the one that responded to you at the deliberative session, actually, with those very words, so thank you for, thank you for calling me so fondly, so accurately. So yeah, I'm, I'm right there. I also remember asbestos. Am I getting that right?
Yeah, there is some on the lower level, there's some nine-by-nine tiles.
Yeah, I think we need to do it right the first time. I don't think that we want to get into the business of that right now, and I think again, with the $4 million, when we talked about the CIP a few weeks ago, that consideration of clearing that as part of the CI, of the SAU sped project at $4 million, I put that in as a placeholder with that being part of the project.
That makes sense, you could bond it out, you're not even going to fill the 200K.
You're not going to fill it, and we can do asbestos abatement and removal correctly because of taking it to the dump with possible, you know, asbestos has me like, forget about it, so.
Well, that'd be an extra charge.
That's a special way of, of removal that, for safety purposes, so. I mean, I would like this stricken from our warrant articles for this year for that reason. And again, I think, not that it doesn't need to go, but it needs to go the right way at the right time with the right project planning, so, and we're not there.
Jenna, did you have any questions, comments? No?
No, just to say that I agree with them both.
Okay. I just had a question. As it relates to the asbestos, is it friable and is there any safety risks to anybody?
No, there is absolutely no safety risk.
All right. So I, I fully support, you know, I think it's smart to look at the big picture, look where you get economies of scale, taking it down for the sake of taking it down until, and you don't even know what you're, we're doing with that area right now. I am actually very happy, I don't care if it's even a little bit of use or a lot, that we are able to offer that building for training for some of our other, you know, our, our community heroes, you know, to be able to use that when they need. So it sounds like we pretty much have a unanimous situation to strike it.
So yeah, so we're, so I move that we strike Article Seven from the ballot.
Second, all right, Lori? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye four zero zero. That motion carries.
It shall be stricken.
Yep.
Article Eight.
My other point, real quick.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Was that also I think there's a lot of increased prices right now on that type of labor. And so I feel like if we, we also, that price may come down closer, come down from $200,000 and maybe cheaper than with the economies of scale, I feel like.
Yeah.
That's another reason, sorry.
Right. No, I definitely agree with you.
I just had to get that out. All right, back to you.
I'm glad you did.
Thank you, I feel better.
Okay, the, the last one we have is something we've talked about here, about retaining surplus. On the town side, you can retain surplus, and there's no law that allows you to do so, but it's just been past practice for 35, 40 years that before tax rate setting purposes, you could go up, and if you had $4 million in surplus and you wanted to retain a million and put down three towards the tax rate or vice versa, you had the ability to do that. In fact, when I worked for a town, I'd be up at Department of Revenue Administration, and I'd be talking to Ed Rainville, and Ed would say, "Matt, how much surplus do you want to let go this year?" I'd say, "Well, what's my rate?" And Ed would say, "It's this." I'd say, "How about, we'll let go $1 million." "That's fine," and it would be done. So the town's ha, has that, that capability. School districts don't unless they adopt this warrant article. And this is a warrant article to, I'll just read it, "To see if the school district will vote to authorize indefinitely until rescinded," that means you do it once, "to retain year-end unassigned general funds in an, in an amount not to exceed in any fiscal year, 5%." Now that's new, it used to be two and a half, they upped it to five. "5% of the current fiscal year's net assessment in accordance with RSA 198:4-B2." It's, uh, it's not a money warrant article, so the budget committee doesn't have to vote on it, but the board does. And I kind of gave you an example of what our net assessment was for this past year, which was $53,653,240. 5% of that, it would give you the ability to retain $2.6 million. So the, the one thing, you know, last, last year we had an $8 million surplus. That was, my gosh, $4 million higher than any surplus we have ever had in the history of Merrimack, easily by far. To have had this warrant article then, that would have been a perfect time to retain some surplus to offset some future expenditure or spike in the budget for tax rate stabilization. So I also included a copy of the law in brilliant blue over here that says, you know, basically you can do this, you can do it, you know, with 5% of the net assessment, and you can, before expending any of these monies, you have to hold a public hearing. Public hearings are done at this board table here, they're published X amount of days in advance, and you publish them and you put them in the newspaper, you call it a public hearing, it would be for the purpose of expending, you know, surplus that's retained and hold your public hearing, and then you, then you could deliberate and make your decision either at that, that public hearing at the conclusion, or you could, you know, have the two-week rule and, and do it, do it again. So it gives you the option of doing that. It's something we've talked in the past, we haven't, you know, gone to this level yet. There's a lot of districts, London Dairy, Bedford, I'm not sure of Hudson, I think Hudson does. There's a lot of districts that do, do this, and they do it for tax rate stabilization, and they do it also for any emergency expenditures that, that may come up. And the one change in the law from years past was, you used to have to petition the Commissioner of Education. That's gone from the law now, that did change. So all you need is a, a public hearing and it's under your control. And then the next year, if we were to have like a $6 million surplus, you could hold another meeting, say, "We would like to retain X amount," and then you could retain it every year or just give it all back. So it's totally up to the board, whatever they would want it to. And a lot of that kind of depends on working with the town and how their budget cycle goes. If they have a hard year and we have a big surplus, we can dump some of our surplus in there. It's like a dam, basically, you know, you want to keep the water level flowing in a correct level, and this gives you the mechanism along with the town of Merrimack also to work together to, to get there. Because spikes in your tax bill based upon excessive amount of surplus, like the $8.1 million that we had because we couldn't hire anybody during the COVID years, can really play havoc with your, your, your finances, your escrow accounts, everything like that if you guys escrow taxes in your mortgage, if you have a mortgage, which I have a mortgage, so. So it's just something for your considerations, first time we formally discussed it, but we have kind of discussed it in the past.
Senator, may I just say also, from experience with a fund like this in the past, one of the most important mechanisms for, for maintaining fiscal and operational stability in a school system, and it's extraordinarily important.
Shannon?
I think, you know, the one thing, and even at the beginning of the cycle, the, any apprehension I had about this, because you, you know I'm a fan of stabilizing the tax rate, I've talked about it for 12 years now, but the concern was that we were not the agents to expend, and there were only three circumstances under which we could petition the Commissioner of Education to withdraw funds from that. So until now, it was not a good move for this district. The, the change in the laws, which I wish I knew when it happened because it would have sent a, a cupcake to whoever sponsored that bill. Honestly, you know, that is something that has put us in such a disadvantage when it comes to being able to show the hard work we do in, in fiscal responsibility. Uh, because we have always tried to do that, but we had to do it with every nut and bolt of the budget. This gives us some grace in an ungraceful economy. We don't know what the next shoe to drop is. And I'm thinking about what this could have done to our, to our, for our families in 2008 to 2012, when we were having those, when we had recessions, where we could have given some grace and some relief, but the law was not in our favor then. So now that it is, I think this is an exceptionally good idea, because again, we're still in a period where we're going to have now better surpluses than we will maybe in three to five years, because we're not going to have the grants offsetting our operational costs like computers and, and connectivity to the level that we have it now. It's not going to be there in five years. So we're lucky now, we are not guaranteed luck later. So it's something I think we should definitely consider, and the only thing I would say is if we do accept this, we just need to remunerate the, the last two articles. So we would call it the new Article Seven. But I think this is, this is the right thing to help the, the taxpayer long-term to stabilize that tax rate.
Thank you. And was that a motion today?
If you want it to be a can be. So I move that we, uh, move Article Eight now, but now call it Article Seven.
Do I have a second? Jenna? All right, any other discussion on it?
I just want to clarify one thing. Future boards may decide to give back the surplus to the taxpayer at any time.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Oh, is that it? That was easy. I was expecting more, I'm sorry.
And along the same vein, future boards could decide to put a warrant article to rescind it at the same time, right?
Well, they could decide to have a warrant article to rescind it, and then the people would have to vote in a positive for it to go back.
Exactly.
Yes.
Otherwise, it just goes on into perpetuity.
Yes.
Okay. All those in, I, I just wanted to say, I think it's smart, and I think that, you know, exactly, you know, I agree with what's been said about it is it gives more flexibility, not quite like the town's flexibility, but similarly, that we can coordinate with them, work well with them, so that we do keep consistent tax rates, taxes, you know, for our citizens. So I think it's.
It gives, it gives us, and I mean us, sitting here, a really great overall management tool to stabilize things. And I, I think it's really kind of valuable since the change in the law to allow the board to retain or expend themselves without the Commissioner's approval.
Shannon?
So just to clarify, you know, by saying it gives us nothing more than a right, but you still have to have that hearing to actually make the choice of what to keep or give.
Yeah.
So that will happen annually, that the number in which you, you look to entertain to, to stabilize the tax rate will not, will, it's not just, it's a guaranteed amount of money that will go into a fund, is that we, every board will make a decision every year what to do with that money, knowing they have the latitude to use it. So it's not going to just get thrown in a savings account without there being a true vetting of it on, in, in a, in a public hearing. There's been a lot of sirens tonight, so sorry.
All of those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, that's four zero zero. And I think that that concludes our warrant article discussion.
Uh, no, we have Article Eight, which is now Article Seven, which is the budget.
All right, gotcha, gotcha. The final one, all right.
And that's our nine, that's now eight, sorry.
Yes, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Yeah, all right, I'll, I'll entertain a motion, I'll entertain, actually back to Matt for that one, the final one.
Final one. "Shall the district raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by the vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling $83,439 and $156. Should this article be defeated, the default budgets shall be $82,222,649, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the district or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40:13, 10 and 16 to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only." This is board vote and a budget committee vote.
Do I have a, a motion on that one?
I move that we accept Article, what is now Eight for the budget.
Thank you. A second is by Shannon. I think we've already discussed this quite a bit, so all of those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, that's four zero zero. The next item is the, let's see, do we get all of those? Let me just, warrant, capital improvement, budget, okay. The request for board authority to correspond to Gary Daniels regarding House Bill 478. So what I'd like to ask of you is that you give me the authority to communicate on behalf of the board with the purpose of trying to recoup money on behalf of the school district in approximately $130,000 that several years ago we put in for filtration for the schools. The school district was very proactive about getting that filtration in ASAP in it, in the intent of that time period, and Shannon can, Shannon knows full well, was that whenever we could, however we could, we would try to recoup that money. And so I've been seeing in the news that, you know, there's, there's a House bill to recoup it for the Merrimack Water, or the Village District, but there's still this $130,000 that I want back for this district. So I just need the permission to advocate for that, and I just, you know, wanted to, to ask for that. Shannon?
I would like to ask for that, but I'm greedy because it's still ridiculous we had to do it, and I'm still mad about it. So that said, there's recurring cost of things like filters, and I would like there to be to be consideration for future recouping of any costs associated with the filtration that we did have to install. My personal opinion, how much are filters a year, Matt? I know you, that's how we retained the first payment we got, specifically so we could do maintenance on those facilities.
Yeah, it was like $31,000, something like that. We got from the state.
Right.
When the money was available, two years after we did the project, the money was finally out.
Sure, still getting around to, I see it in the, but that's what I'm saying. It's like, you're always going to have recurring costs because we had to take the steps to do it. It's in place now, and we need to maintain it.
Yeah.
So, I would like there to be, I mean, I think we should do exactly what you said, but I don't know if further advocacy needs to happen for those who took on, like, schools like us that took on the cost of a filtration system to provide safe water to our students because it wasn't there. So, with that, I don't know what an annual cost would be, Matt. Would you say $20,000 in maintenance and supplies?
It's kind of, you know, for a couple of years, you can go with maybe like $5,000, and then you actually have to replace one of the cartridges, which is pretty big. And so, that can be a $20,000 base. So, it kind of like every four years, you do like $5,000, $5,000, $5,000, year five, $20,000.
Yep. So, I would like them to be responsible for the maintenance of it too. So, I don't know if that's possible, but I think, you know, we did the right thing at the right time, we're years ahead of the rest of this town doing it. So, these kids are at least, we did what we were, again, we were hired to make a safe environment, we did that. But we should absolutely 1,000% hold them accountable to every drop of water that goes to these kids' mouths while they're in our care. And so, I don't think the $131,000 is enough. It's a start.
I would agree, and I would, I mean, let me back up. This bill was a bipartisan bill by our Merrimack contingency, and former and state reps fought hard for this. And we deserve it. We deserve to get every penny back, and every penny we have to keep spending on this system. So, however that can be negotiated, however that can be amended at the state senate level, I would say ask for the whole kit and caboodle.
Okay.
Agreed.
Okay. Your statement sounded like a pretty good motion there, Lori. So, I'll let you go ahead and make the motion, and I just wanted to be specific that I want to be able to communicate with more than just Gary Daniels, just however I can advocate, wherever that path takes me. I just want that permission. And I'll keep you in the loop, obviously, of whatever it is, but I, you know, just don't forget. I just don't forget those things.
I make a motion that Senator Guayumi advocate for the Merrimack School District to recoup our funds in the water filtration system related to HB 478 and any future costs related to maintenance or repair of that system due to the fault of other people.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Made by Shannon. Anyone else want to speak to it? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Can I vote? I can vote for, I'm just in a conflict of interest, right? All right. Four, zero, zero. All right. Thank you. And I appreciate the trust that you have in me to do that, but I, we'll do it. I don't know how hopeful I am, but we'll just keep the good fight.
Well, and anything any of us can do to help, along those lines, let us know.
Perfect. Thank you. We are on to other. Does any? Shannon?
Prior to tonight's meeting, I asked if we could explore the option of a warrant article to allow the new home of the Merrimack Historical Society to be under the ownership of the town, so it becomes a permanent, instead of becoming a tenant, they become the owner. Has anything?
Yes. That's been given to legal. We contacted Kathy Peale, we gave her all the information. She has since forwarded that to another attorney in the Wally Law Firm, who is more attuned to real estate transactions and that type. So, that's pending right now.
So, what would happen to our warrant that we just passed if we wanted to add a warrant article, or could it be done on the town's side if we talk to them?
It would have to be, because it's our property.
We have it on ours, right?
We'd have to have an agreement that the town wants to buy at first. And it's almost like a joint meeting kind of thing, you know? And so, it needs another year to cook. I need the legal opinion, and that's going to take some time to sort through that. And then, we need to establish that the Historical Society, which I believe is under the auspices of the town of Merrimack, would want to purchase that building as opposed to us doing the lease, so.
Okay. Thank you for the update.
Yeah.
Anything else under other? Is that Lori?
I just wanted to go and add a story to one of our warrant articles that I didn't want to put into our motion discussion, but in regards to our salary correction. Most of you know my daughter is a teacher. This is her second year teaching in another state. That school district is larger than ours with a smaller budget than ours, but she gets paid more as a second-year teacher than what we do here in Merrimack. If we really want to recruit and retain the best of the best, and especially, I'm telling you, the colleges especially, well, I could list off several, are doing an outstanding job, not just giving education degrees, but advanced certificates in autism and other specialties. And they're, these students who are coming out, they have more student teaching practicum internship hours than most career fields do when they come out. But we've got to correct that lower end of our grid for those students, to recruit them. And a healthy organization, and I said this last week, generally has a third, and a third, and a third, a third highly experienced, a third mid-career, and a third young who are being trained, mentored, but bringing fresh ideas in. And so, I really think it's important in a year when we have received extra surplus to make that correction once and for all, to help, because you all know what the cost of living is in New Hampshire. It's expensive, and we have all kinds of things going on that makes it difficult to recruit students from outside our state who went to school out, or from here, but went to school out of state to come back. And we want them to come back. And so, I just think it's important that we understand that that market correction is really, really going to help our young teachers.
Thank you for that. That's a great story. I appreciate you bringing that to the table. I have one item. It's just, as I said earlier, board member, I mean, Vice Chair Rothaus, you know, couldn't be here tonight, but she did have a couple of thoughts that she wanted me to read. So, she wanted, essentially, you know, we received $8 million back this year, which offset the tax rate. This year, we might have $3 million, she's just guessing. This would mean perhaps a $5 million deficit. Every member of the board answers to our community and our constituents. We all believe in the work before us. We need to figure out how to decrease spending while maintaining high-quality education. It comes down to how we use our resources. This should be a focus for a July 2022 goals meeting. There was a $25 million cut to state aid. This will impact the budget. We should discuss the most recent report on the Commission to Study School Funding. Public schools are being challenged. And then the consent agenda, item four.
Thank you. I have educator and an administrator nomination. The educator is for Ophelia Elfaki to become a one-year grade-five teacher at Master Cola Elementary School. This is a replacement due to a transfer of a fifth-grade teacher to the Merrimack Middle School. And I have a nomination, I'm pleased to nominate Nicole O'Brien as an interim assistant principal at Merrimack Middle School, and this is a replacement position between now and July 1st.
Is there a motion? Made by Shannon. Seconded by Jenna. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Four, zero, zero. And now, we are on to public comments on agenda items. I'd like to thank our public that's been here with us tonight for the duration of the meeting, but I will open up the floor. We'll do the same thing. If anyone wants to speak, we'll let you come to the microphone, and then I'll transition to Shannon to see if we have any. Six, okay. All right. Go right ahead. It's yours.
Hi, Erin Pagan, 33 Mallard Point. Sorry. Can you, I feel like this was doing this earlier too. Can you hear me now? Or no?
I can hear you.
Okay. So, I guess I just want a little bit of clarification. I'm hoping that you can answer it, just because it's so quiet here tonight. But I think it, there's a little bit of confusion as far as, like, if our, if my kid, who does not have the vaccine, is exposed to somebody in class, does that mean that they have to then stay home for five days? Because it sounds like the vaccinated kids don't have to stay home for those five days, but the unvaccinated will if they're a close contact. I don't know if I completely misunderstood that, but...
You know, we don't normally allow feedback, but because it's such an important item that's going to go into effect, I'm going to let Chris Olson address that.
If you wait until the morning, I'm going to have that posted on our website, and it'll send something out to all of the parents and the staff in terms of procedures.
So, it'll clarify if, whether you're vaccinated or not.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. So, I guess I just, I'm starting to feel like the gold post is moving. I, you know, I'm happy that we're going with the five-day quarantine instead of the 10, but back in, I believe it was December's meeting, Mr. Olson, you had said that, you know, by now, most people will have been able to get their vaccine and their booster or whatever it is, and we would hopefully be able to get rid of the masks. And now, it's kind of like, well, you know, we'll go with the five days, and I'm just starting to feel like there's just no end in sight, and it's super frustrating. Now, you're, what's on the, what's on the Excel spreadsheet also doesn't make sense. I mean, if you're looking at your total kids in quarantine, and then total kids who have COVID, and then total kids excluded, you're counting all of that, which is, I feel like that's skewing that 5% number. So, that might just be something you want to look into. Like, how about instead of counting the kids who are just like not in school, like, how about we're just counting the kids who actively have COVID instead of the kids who are also excluded for, I don't know, waiting a test? I really don't know. That Excel sheet is very confusing. There is a lot of information on there, and if we could just keep it simple as like, this is how many people are excluded for COVID specifically, excuse me, I think it would just make it easier. And then, I also think that your 5%, it wouldn't really actually be hitting 5% if we were not skewing the numbers. But my other thought here, and I hope that this wouldn't be the case, but I think, I think we're really bringing parents to a desperate point where we are so desperate, and I don't mean we as in me, so let me just make that clear, but we as parents who don't want our kids wearing masks, who don't want our kids being excluded because they're not vaccinated, first of all, that's discrimination. That's a whole other, that's a whole other issue. But I think what you're going to start finding is there's going to be a real possibility that eventually, because we're just continuing this and the gold post is moving, parents could possibly start lying, right? So, you know, you know, oh, say, my husband, say, I have COVID, right? Not me, but whatever. We're not going to really tell the school, because we just want our kids in school, right? So, if my husband is at home with the sniffles and he's positive for COVID, there's a good chance that we're not going to tell you, because we don't want our kids missing out on 10 days of school for nothing. And I'm not saying that, that's me. I'm not saying I would do that. I'm just saying, it's a very real possibility, because we're bringing parents to a very desperate point where we just want our kids in school. So, it's something to think about. I actually don't think you're doing any favors by still continuing this mask mandate, because eventually, people are just going to start lying. So, it's just a thought.
All right. Thank you. Shannon?
Okay. Bear with me, I'm hoping to get the name right. So, it's Michelle Karakatos of Swift Lane. Hello. My youngest daughter attends Thornton's Ferry School, and today they no longer had the opt-out option due to the numbers over 5%. I explained to her yesterday that this would occur, and she was very upset, in tears and worried. Today, she expressed her concerns to her teacher, and after school, she was very upset with her day because of wearing masks. She said she no longer wants to go to school. She had a stomach ache and a headache. Masking children most certainly affects their physical and mental health. I'm a school counselor at another district, and I'm strapped at work due to staff out with COVID. I now need to figure out what to do, because I refuse to have my child hate school because of this experience, but more importantly, force her to feel anxious and sick. I'm now going to be one less staff member in my facility, and my child will not be in school during this time. I will take the day to decide what to do. Financially, I'd be working to provide her an unmasked private education or decide to homeschool. I'm really struggling as a mother and educational professional. Everyone who has wanted to be vaccinated has had the chance, so why now? Why still continue this craziness at the risk of our children's health? If your vaccine and masking did what they all said, we wouldn't need to continue this facade. I will continue to stand up for our children here in Merrimack, regardless of what we decide to do, but she will not be attending while masking is mandated. Parents who are struggling with the same things I am, reach out as I may start my own program to fight against this abuse. I have been in and out of private and public care since 2007. I'm horrified how political this has become and how our children's safety is no longer number-one priority. Call me radical, I don't care. My kids' health and safety are always number one. Thank you for hearing my voice. I hope you will consider what's best for this next generation, as it's up to us to lead with ethical considerations, not with the funds given to push a mask agenda.
Again, do you need my name and everything again? Rebecca Stats, 11 Bradford Drive. To go along with what was just spoken about, perhaps, parents choosing to be less than forthcoming with information, not to cast aspersions on anyone's integrity in the matter, not only might parents be not willing to share information, I've come across a number of circumstances in speaking with friends or, you know, overhearing, people saying, "Oh, I know I have it. I've never been this sick before. I know my kids. My kid has never been this sick before. I know they have COVID." I was speaking with two friends the other day. They were having this conversation, and one said to the other, "Well, did you use the PCR or the antigen test?" Which neither one are accurate, but we all know that. And she said, "Oh, I didn't have to. I just knew." So, I called them out of school. Okay. Right there, you have another problem. There's another false positive, potentially. You know, it's taking days now. There was just a thing that came out from WMR. It's taking days to wait for results. I would like to ask with respect that if you're going to request or require that parents who give tests to their children, if it's, you know, what is it? If it's, because I'm doing this now, my brain is backfiring. What is it? You have it, if it's a, if it's a positive test? No, if it's a negative test, you have to take it and send the picture in?
If it's negative, you have to send it to the nurse. If it's positive, I don't think you require the positive.
Right. Negative, send the picture in to the nurse. I would like to request that if a student is absent from school, if you're going to require that sort of verification from us, so to speak, it should also be required the other way, because we also know that this virus, this whatever it is, is non-discriminatory in who can pass it. Vaccinated, unvaccinated. I would like to see if, you know, if proof that, one way or another, if proof is required on one side, proof should be required on both. That would probably go a long way to correcting numbers. Might weed out a lot of people who are doing that, saying, "I know my kid. I know my kid is sick." It might also help for allaying a lot of fears. And also, I completely agree, I look forward to your clarification on the five days, because if Day 6 through 10 for students who don't want to come in or cannot come in with a mask, if Day 6 through 10 is considered an unexcused absence, that is at, if I'm understanding correctly, that is at the discretion of the school board. That is not a law. That is not anything anywhere written down except at the discretion of this board. And that is discrimination. That is penalizing a student. And that... of this board. And that is discrimination. That is penalizing a student, and that would be against free and appropriate education, because as they go up the chain, they only have so many unexcused absences. So that would be discriminating against someone who chooses not to wear the mask. Did I, does that make sense? Everybody looks at me like I did not make sense at all. Okay, thank you.
Shannon?
Tiffany Trant, South Babusick Lake Road. Good evening. There needs to be clarification regarding close contacts. The way it was explained was very confusing. If an unvaccinated student is in close contact with a positive student, does that mean they quarantine for five days and then wear a mask an additional five days? Also, can you please clarify vaccinated kids don't have to stay home, but unvaccinated kids do? Thank you.
Any other, yeah, it's all yours.
I promise it's got nothing to do with masks or vaccinations or anything like that. Oh, sorry. Put that back in. Matt, I have a question for you, if you can answer it. I want to make sure I have this straight, though. Um, you were talking in article five, I believe it was, when you were talking-
Sorry, I know you said it earlier, but name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Kathy Comar, Belmont Drive. Um, I think it was article five you were talking about, when you were talking about taking money out of the surplus to give to a pay raise for the teachers over a couple of years? Am I getting the article right? Was article five or article six? I can't remember. It was five?
It was five.
Yeah.
It was five. Okay, um, you said that we had a surplus of eight million?
Last, last year was eight million, eight point one million.
So if you're going to be taking money out to give the teachers an increase in pay, why are you not taking the one point six out of there to put the new roof on Thornton's Ferry? Are you not allowed to do that?
I mean, that's, that's not something we can dialogue about, like, we're here, but we can certainly get an answer for you.
Okay, yeah. I was just wondering that, because I figured if you could take money out of the surplus to, you know, increase the teachers' pay rates and everything like that, instead of putting it on a warrant article or putting on a budget, why can't you just take the one point six out for the roof?
Shannon?
Naomi, oops. I touched something I shouldn't have. Naomi Halter, ten Everest Drive. Merrimack School Board, thank you for the caring consideration with which you approached the discussion of the Thornton's Ferry roof replacement tonight. It's clear that it was a tough decision, and I appreciate both your concern for the well-being of our children, and also your efforts to be transparent to the voters and taxpayers of Merrimack. Naomi Halter.
You can continue.
I guess I can. I think we've, we've gone through them. Jennifer Jobin, Mary Meeting Drive. Dear School Board members, thank you for your efforts to come up with a creative way to bring teacher compensation up to a competitive level by proposing the use of surplus funds in a warrant article. It is an especially important year to ensure that we can retain and attract quality teachers. Thank you, Jen Jobin. Rachel Papke, Tinker Road. And I actually didn't even have to look at your phonetic that time. I've, I've got some practice. Uh, so, good evening. I want to take the time to thank everyone for the thoughtful budget discussions over the past few weeks, as well as providing additional transparency around many budget light items. Regarding the discussion around the TFS roofing repairs and where this expense should be included in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget or warrant article, I think that one important data point to include in any budget documentation is the range of costs the district may incur should this expense not pass as proposed and the roof fails in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. I would assume that if this becomes an emergency situation to repair the roof, that the cost to remedy it in a reactive way would cost, would more than likely come at a higher cost due to additional damage or health slash safety issues compared to the twenty-two, twenty-three proposed cost. I believe this additional data may help the taxpayers make an informed decision when considering this expense as either a warrant article or in the operating budget. Thank you also for taking steps to bring the compensation of our teachers, for our teachers up to a more competitive level. It is important to take these steps to retain and attract our highly qualified educators. Thank you for your consideration, Rachel Papke. And finally, Joanne Grobecker, twenty-seven Craig. Dear Board members, thank you for your efforts to keep teacher pay competitive so we can attract and retain quality teachers. Apprecatively, Joanne Grobecker. And we are caught up on email.
Okay, in that case, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Made by Shannon, seconded by Jenna. All those in favor signify by saying aye. That's four zero zero. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.